Okay, first thing on the agenda tonight. That's the regular meeting. This isn't the regular meeting yet. First thing is the public hearing for the Calcaterra clearing, filling, and grading permit. So can I have, I'll make a motion to open that public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Hi.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, I'm Karen Martin, Landscap Architects. Should I set these all up right here for you to see?
That's fine. And also, would you please sign in?
Sure.
Who you're representing.
I'm here too. Do I need to, I shall, do I need to sign in as well?
If you're going to speak, yes. If you're not going to speak, you really don't have to. It's up to you. You can speak.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not always talking, but I can.
I'll sign in anyway, just in case.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I just signed my name in.
Yeah, that's.
This is the Commonwealth of Commons. This is the Commons of the Commonwealth.
Okay, I don't know if I'm talking to any of the audience or just you?
Well, before I give you the mic, we have our town engineer that has joined by Zoom and also Henry Heffner, who is associated with Tuxedo Farms. So they don't, they don't really impact you that much.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So we have, my social.
It's on, it's on.
So we have before you a backyard for the Calcateras. They're on 59 Maple Brook Road. Mr. Calcaterra decided to fill the backyard. He did get a report that says what kind of fill it was before he did it. And we submitted it at the request of the engineer to the, to the engineer. And I believe the board, we submitted it thus. And he didn't realize that he was supposed to have a permit to do filling. So he filled, so they filled, he filled this part of the backyard. So he's here before you asking basically for forgiveness and approval to proceed with stabilizing the slope and growing things on it and finishing up the work that he started. He had a stop, they had a stop work order on the project. And it was sheer neglect of checking into the town codes. He did not do it purposefully. So is there any questions?
So how much of the work is actually done? Roughly percentage wise?
A lot of it's been done. It's just been, all of the, almost everything I show here were just, the existing contours are what's, what's been done back here. And we're just proposing the new contour show being smoothed out a little bit and to make it more even. And since right now it's a little rocky and hard to grow things. So we were planning on smoothing it out and bringing in about six inches of topsoil and putting down good topsoil and also putting erosion control fabric down and growing a fescue mix to stabilize it.
So everything is completed except the topsoil?
Well, and then the, and a little bit more fine grading because it's rough grading right now. It's like all bumpy. They just, they just left it without finishing it because they got a stop work.
Is the erosion control fence there yet?
It is not there yet, but it hasn't moved at all the soil. So it's pretty, it's a pretty hard soil that we're using. But we do have a report from the site where it was from, the excavator, D. Marino. They provided the source of the material and they were the, the people that brought it in.
Want to add anything or feel free?
No, no, just we really, I mean, we, there was no ill intent here. We didn't realize that we needed, we were just trying to kind of level off our backyard a little bit so our kids could use it. And we didn't realize that we needed a permit for that. So when we got the order for the letter from the town, we immediately stopped working on it. And, you know, Deborah was wonderful with providing us all of, you know, the things that we needed to submit, which we did. So we're hoping that we could just get your approval and continue and finish up the project.
Okay. Does any member of the board have any?
Yeah, I got a question maybe in an observation. What is the difference in elevation between the top of the slope and the bottom?
The top of the slope is at, well, the coping of the swimming pool is 548. So it goes to 547 right here to kind of make it a nice gentle slope. And then the bottom is 532.
548 to 5?
548 to 532, correct.
That's quite a slope.
Yes, it is.
You're not concerned some of that soil may wash down?
We have, I showed two and a half on one slope and that's considered stable. And we're using the erosion control fabric just as it records.
I see.
This was all done before the big rain, right?
Yes.
This was done before the big rain.
Stable through the big rains?
Yes.
I would say that's a pretty good test.
Yeah. The big rain. The, the little problem might be the topsoil, but that's why we're putting the fabric down.
Sydney, really? Billy, you've asked yours.
I asked my question.
Justin?
I know, no comments.
So is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this?
Yes. Hi.
Have you, I think you've signed in.
I did sign in. I own property in Nine Chestnut Court, which is an adjoining property, which is why I got the letter. Thank you for spending $6 to send it to me. You're welcome. So I just had a question because I actually like, my best friend and I like grew up in that house together. So I know that there's the stream sort of behind your property. How close did that extra soil get to that stream?
I, I'm not sure. Karen, do you have?
Well, there, it's, it's, the stream's not on their property. And they're 10 feet away from the property line. I'm not sure how far.
Yeah, the stream doesn't run through our yard at all.
Right, I was just wondering how close you got to that stream. I know that's actually part of Sterling Forest.
Yes. I, I don't think we look close to it at all.
Yeah, no, I think it's for, you know, quite a distance.
But did I just hear you say that the fill is 10 feet from the property line? So it's a minimum of 10 feet from the stream, minimally?
A minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the fact that the stream is not on your property is irrelevant because you don't want this to run off into any stream.
Right, right.
It hasn't gotten close to the property line. The, the soil basically is, we're spreading it out a little bit more so we could put topsoil on. The existing excavation actually stops about 25 feet away from the property line.
Were there any measures made? Like, were there any trees that, I don't know, like if you fill a tree like a foot up its trunk, it'll die?
There are a couple of trees that we're going to put a stone tree well around on the uphill side and the downhill side will have no disturbance at all. And we showed construction fencing around that to make sure that there is no disturbance. Because none of these, these are two trees that we want to save. And they are, they have not been impacted with any of the grading so far. But we, we do need to spread it out a little. So we showed a small retaining wall that's two and a half from high to, to help keep the tree roots from being smothered. Plus, the downhill side will be completely open. So it's more than half of the tree, tree, oh, over half of the tree canopy is free and clear of any construction or filling.
Anybody else from the public here who would like to comment on this? And there's nobody online by design.
Well, I'd like to comment. I'm a little surprised that the contractor didn't know that he needed permits to do this kind of work. And I, this is a local kind of D. Marino right here in town. So that's not a good thing.
Yeah, it's quite well taken.
So who, I guess, who issued or discovered to stop, to issue the stop work order? Added that kind of help?
You know that?
We got a call to the office. I don't even.
Building inspector went down.
Yeah.
Okay, so nobody else has any comments. And we'll come back to this during the regular meeting when we consider approving it or not.
Oh, okay.
So this is just the public hearing.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Stick around.
Okay, we will.
Few more minutes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second favor? Favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we'll call to the regular meeting to order. And the first thing is to approve the minutes from our last meeting of September 5th. Anybody on the board have any questions regarding those minutes? Billy, are you okay with the minutes?
Abstained.
You weren't here?
I was abstained.
Okay, very good. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Now we're back to the Calcaterra.
Hello again. Aye.
I think everything has been said. You're, you're free to say anything you know that you forgot. I think the board has asked all their questions. So Kelly, while we didn't authorize you to prepare a resolution, we can.
You can take action. I've put together a couple of conditions. Before we get to the conditions though, I just want to say, I'm going to push my sign off. I just want to say that it's a secret type two action. So if the board could recognize that it's a type two action. Deborah also referred this to the county. The county has come back and said they don't need to review clearing, filling, and grading permits. However, technically, we still need to send them anyway. So that is their response, saying they don't need to review it. And I do have some comments, but some conditions for potential resolution. But I know Sean wrote a memo. I don't know if you wanted to hear that or do you want me to go to the other conditions?
Um, maybe I, no, I, I want to read, so I don't need that thing. Uh, Sean, did you hear that from Kelly?
Yes, I did. I just have several comments. I filed a written report with the board, definitely got a copy of that and they provided some responses. Just in terms of your potential action this evening, I just want to point out that there are some items on plan that are outside your approval or potential approval. For example, they had a shed and some other structures. They're not looking for any site plan approval. This is just clearing, filling, and grading. For those structures, they would work with the building department and seek a building permit. So I just want the applicant and the board to understand that, you know, the outdoor kitchen and all that, that's not approved by this board. That would go to the building inspector and additional permits are required. In terms of the work already being done and work being done without a permit, I just want to point out that any penalties or anything like that, that's in the purview of the town board, that's not up to this board, that would start with an enforcement action from the building inspector. I don't know if he's decided to go that route. But again, it's not really something for the board to consider. What is something for the board to consider though is the material that's been placed there. The applicant did give me a report on the soil. The report makes no mention whatsoever of this property. It, it's regarding a self-storage facility in New Jersey. The report talks about borings at this New Jersey site as well as provides physical and textural analysis of those soils. There's no manifest or anything that links that site to this site. So I would say that any condition should either demonstrate that the soil that was placed is solely from that site. And if that's not possible, then I think the applicant should provide some additional laboratory testing just to make sure that this material is appropriate to be placed in a residential neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So I think as a condition, we should have the building inspector consider whether any type of fine is necessary to discuss that with the town board. We are not an enforcement party here. Testing, I think we want to put the testing into the special conditions as they're called. And the way this will work, if and when we approve our resolution of approval, it's still, the building inspector has to verify that these conditions that we'll put in that resolution have been satisfied. And then he will issue you a permit and then you can proceed with the work. I would suggest since that might take a few days, that you put up the silt fence. I think that's, we could, they could do that without.
Yes. Putting up the silt fence, yeah.
I think that would be a good idea. Rain's coming.
Not a problem.
So that's not going to cause any. So Kelly, you just wanted to summarize those conditions if you could.
Yes, so, well, I'm not going to be very good at summarizing them, so I'll just read them. Prior to the issuance of a clearing, filling, and grading permit by the building inspector, the applicant shall provide copies of any contracts to perform such clearing, filling, and grading to the planning board attorney to confirm that the contracts state that the contracts are subject to section 9843 of the town code and that a copy of section 9843 is attached to and a part of the contracts. Said contracts will be reviewed to confirm they include the proposed work. File with the town clerk an agreement to indemnify and hold harmless the town from any claims arising out of the activities approved under the clearing, filling, and grading permit. Comply with the memorandum of the town engineer dated September 3rd, 2023 to the satisfaction of the town engineer. I'll need to tweak this one a little bit based on the conversation. But provide information to the building department and town engineer regarding the source of the material and the reports and reports of the testing of the materials that we've got. Any, any and all fines relative to the current zoning enforcement is in the jurisdiction of the building inspector. Per the town code, clearing, filling, and grading activities shall be conducted only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. and no operations shall be conducted on Sundays or holidays. Per the town code, clearing, filling, and grading activities shall be subject to surveillance of the site as determined by the building inspector and town engineer. Prior to issuance of a clearing, filling, and grading permit by the building inspector, the applicant shall post an escrow in the amount of $2,500 with the town for any costs associated with this service. Clearing, filling, and grading shall be done in such a manner as not to result in an increase of surface water runoff onto any other properties and shall not result in any condition which increases erosion or results in any unstable conditions upon the site or adjacent properties, wetlands, watercourses, or water bodies. This approval does not approve any new or proposed structures currently shown on the plans. Any new or proposed structures must apply to the building department for the proper permits. And I was halfway through the building, the applicant shall place a silt fence. I'll fix that one up. They shall place a silt fence. And one issue I wanted to reference, I know it was in Sean's memo, but the code talked about insurance required. And I had thought that the work was entirely done, but it doesn't sound like it was tonight. We said it wasn't completely done. So the applicant will also have to file with the town clerk proof of insurance adequate to cover the intended work, naming the town tuxedo as an additional insured on the applicant's policy. Now that I found out it wasn't totally done, so. And that's all.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If John D. Marino signs and has noted as that he got that soil from the source for which we gave you the report, is that adequate?
I think we'd want proof that the source is clean, that it's clean. Not just that he got it there, it could be contaminated.
Okay, so do you, does the engineer know exactly what type of testing he's looking for? Or does he, do you want to get that to us?
Well, I would like to see what testing you have first, rather than you have to go out and do additional testing. If there's been no testing done and the report that was provided didn't have any laboratory testing other than physical testing, then we can discuss it outside of the meeting. I, I do have something in mind, but I would, I'd rather look and see what's been done already.
Okay. We'll give you a call.
Okay.
Kelly, do we have to have a motion to classify this as a type two?
Yes, please.
Okay. And for your benefit, seeker stands for state environmental quality. You know what that stands for. Type two action doesn't need any type of review for seeker. But we have to define it as such.
Okay.
So the first motion, or I'll make a motion to classify this as type two, requiring no review. Second? First one?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's out of the way. So now I'll make a motion to approve this resolution as Kelly read it to you. There are some general conditions, but those are the specific ones that you'll have to comply with in addition to the general ones.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on, on that proposed resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to, my experience is that Stephen D. Martino keeps pretty good records. He should be able to tie this together nicely.
We'll give it a try.
So I'll make a motion to approve that resolution as Kelly start.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, just outside of your issue, I think Chris, the building inspector, should maybe contact Mr. D. Martino and say, you should have known that a permit was needed.
Yeah, we actually did. I spoke.
You did that already?
Yes.
Chris did it already? Okay, all right, good.
Well, thank you.
With that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Karen, I'll email you a copy of the draft resolution.
Yes, thank you, Kelly.
Okay, the next item is a clearing, filling, and grading permit for Tuxedo Farms. So if one of the representatives could just explain the area that this permit would cover.
Out of her bag of maps, pick the right one.
If you pick the right one first, you win the lottery. That's how I feel when I have a USB drive. Get it in there the first time.
Thank you.
I like my new seat, Deb.
Christina Zalesi. Langen Engineering. So the clearing, grading permit is down in this area here. It'll be used as staging, stockpiling, and processing material. The area is about two acres. We have on our main semi-control plan, we incorporated that into our plan set that we submitted for the overall. We have erosion semi-control measures in place. Obviously, we don't, given that we're near the wetlands and the buffer. I know there was discussion about the stockpile. So we'll, we'll make sure that it's at a reasonable height and it'll be stabilized as, in the time, according to the timeframes for the DEC if it's left. So the applicant needs to comply with all requirements related to that.
Just to specify, this, this neighborhood, this area, this site is known as East Terrace. The fill that will be stored there will come from the Commons, Quail Road, and West Terrace.
And the, the area that it's coming from is approximately out of Florida.
That is a good question. I mean, it's essentially coming from where the Commons is. Do you think it's probably five to 10 acres total?
Okay, we're limited in how much, given the size of the 20-foot requirement subject to the building inspector allowing more than 20 feet.
And should we approve this tonight? When would you envision you starting this procedure?
So I think it depends in part what happens on the, the rest of the application tonight. But I, I think sometime in the early part of 2024, right, right after the turn of the calendar year.
So you don't envision that happening this year at all? And I, and I know this is preliminary.
Yeah. Sounds like Mitch wants to.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mitch Newman with Lennar. And thank you for the opportunity to appear tonight. Just on that, on that question, while the, the majority of any real site development's not going to take place till the beginning of the new year, we might start using this, this fall just to start staging some materials and getting equipment in the right, getting ready to begin. So I don't want to suggest that this will wait till the, till the new year. You might see some activity here in the fall. But the majority of any land or earth moving or bringing material, bringing earth materials there, that's going to depend on when we start the actual site work for the Commons and Quail Road, which will be the second part of the conversation tonight.
Okay, thank you. I don't think this is going to impact the clearing, filling, and grading. It might impact the second one. Just this afternoon, I was made aware that there is an invasive species on the site. It's called Japanese knotweed.
Yeah.
Which I'd never heard of before, but doesn't mean anything. Now, Kelly, we talked about this a little bit before the meeting. That's not going to impact the.
Not this application, but I think we can rope in some conditions about dealing with that for the next part when we talk about that.
I don't know if you've had a chance to read the revised resolution that Kelly prepared, the redlined resolution?
So I only sent that redlined version to you. I didn't want to confuse anybody.
Okay.
It's only a couple of minor redlines and I can go over those too.
Yeah, why don't you do that and the special conditions?
I didn't want to cause a lot of confusion. So there's, I prepared for the board a draft resolution for clearing, filling, and grading. I docked a footnote after clearing, filling, and grading permit. And that footnote says this permit is issued by the planning board in accordance with town code section 9843, clearing, filling, and grading to the limited extent noted herein, i.e. to be used for the anticipated volume of excess fill from the construction of the Commons, Quail Road, and West Terrace. I'm missing a parentheses. I know, nobody cares, but I got it.
I did.
Okay. The applicant can apply to the planning board in the future to request a modification of this permit if it is to apply to excess fill from other areas of construction. Basically, if they open up other areas and they want to put it and they still want to use it, I'm just kind of pointing that out that they can amend it. The very last sentence of the first paragraph is revised to say this permit is being requested to permit the applicant to use East Terrace for staging, material processing, and storage of material and related construction equipment. Then the next change is the paragraph just before resolution of approval that starts since all movement of material will occur. I actually forgot the word knot, which is kind of big. So the planning board has determined that the posting of a performance bond or other security deposit as authorized pursuant to section 9843H of the town code is not necessary at this time. And then the next change, I have the specific conditions, which I won't read unless the board wants me to, but 1B, I modified to say, confirm the approximate 0.5 acre stockpile area is adequate for the anticipated volume of excess fill from the construction of the Commons, Quail Road, and West Terrace. And number six, stockpiles shall be no higher than 20 feet unless the building inspector permits the heights of the stockpiles to be greater than 20 feet. If materials freeze, the heights of the stockpiles shall be reduced after consultation with the building inspector. And then number eight, materials, should have been materials. But those are, those are all the changes.
Sean, you want to review your comments on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I already did that at your last meeting. Would you like me to go over those at this time? Or I believe they've incorporated into Kelly's resolution.
I did incorporate them, saying, just in case I missed any, that's the catchall, so.
Okay, Sean, so you're, you're, I'll say that, all right?
Okay.
And now, I believe you didn't, this wasn't your area.
No, that's correct.
So let me ask the members of the board if they have any questions about this proposed resolution? No?
There's no blasting involved in the.
Currently, no. Because of the blasting, most of the blasting has been done, but that's, I mean, there may be rock removal that's associated with this, but as of right now, I don't think we're proposing any blasting. I don't want to.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, sorry. We'll, we'll do this as a tag team. So no, just for the, what we're doing here, just to create this, this stockpile and storage area doesn't involve blasting, but ultimately, the work that we're doing in the community will involve some blasting. But, and if it does, and that requires us to move some of the rock, it'll be stockpiled here in this East Terrace area temporarily. So it's not associated with this exact application, but this location will facilitate a place to put some of that blasting. Thank you.
I think we talked about this last time.
In terms of the length of time, the stockpile will be there on that half acre through the whole development?
You know the answer's yes, but that doesn't sound like a great answer. So it can't be there through the whole development because we are going to be developing East Terrace as quickly as we can. So it's there to facilitate getting us started. And then it'll go away, to be blunt, when we start East Terrace. But for the moment, it's kind of a safe haven to give us a place to work so that we can actually get going on the other parts of the community.
Now, this resolution is just for this area? Like, if they need another area when they start other phases, we can do it again?
They have to come back, yeah. And that is part of the reason for the footnote, too. This area is basically supporting these three. But if there's extra room and they need it for a different, then they could come back and modify them.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to address the blasting question, blasting is actually something that I just pulled up. It was covered in your finding statement. So for when the site plan comes up, when they're doing the other development and there may be a potential for it, we will rope back in any of these conditions and mitigation measures that were in there. They would naturally, they would be required to comply with them, but sometimes we like to spell it out for them again, so nobody forgets.
Now, it requires a separate permit, does it not?
Blasting, there's a whole performance standards section that the town has, and notices, and monitoring, and pre-blasting, and things like that, and that would be set up.
Thank you.
I'm good. Nope, thank you.
I know you're not, at least at this time, planning on exporting any soil or rock. But if you did, should we have a condition in there that they would have to test that?
I'm pretty sure there is.
We've discussed that that would be the receiver's problem.
Yeah, I read it in the... I didn't think, they didn't have to test it. I said, soil importation to the property or exportation from the property is not authorized, that any of that will require them to come back to you. So if they want to import or they want to export, they have to return to this board.
That would be a modification to this, if you permit?
Yes.
And one final thing on the rock business, talking about blasting. Other rock that you have to remove, will you be using mechanical hammers? You know, large equipment for that?
I want to say yes, but I don't have that area of expertise, but I can get back to you when I speak to our land development director to make sure that we're using the minimal, minimally invasive equipment as possible.
That's a noisy operation.
Yes, and expensive, by the way, yeah.
I'm good.
Is the, is all the rock from cutting that entrance out taken away? Or is that on the site somewhere?
Our goal is to keep it on-site, because either it'll provide something where you can use for fill or can be perhaps decorative. Yeah, so that...
I assume your cut and fill is designed to be zero.
Always.
What I was asking is, the entrance, it's cut now through all that rock.
Yeah.
Is all that rock taken away somewhere, or is it on the site?
I don't know that happened before Lennar's involvement, so I couldn't say.
Like a lot of rock.
It was processed on-site. They used it for the backfill for trenching and the roads updates. Because there used to be a processing plant in Commons at one point. So the material was reused. That would be the intent, that we would process the material and reuse it, any rock that's removed, to help minimize importation.
Anything else, Bill?
Justin? So I mentioned the locations on this set of plans somewhere? Do you have nowhere to find it?
It should be on the erosion and sediment control plans. We incorporated, we previously submitted a single PH for the permit, but we incorporated everything into the revised set of drawings that we also submitted for the other application, so it was comprehensive.
Okay. And it lands all within the area that you're clearing and filling anyway?
Correct.
So, okay. No further comments?
Okay, thanks, Justin. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the COG permit with conditions. Favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that takes care of that one. Mitch or Brad, before we get to the other item, maybe you could explain briefly, I don't know if every member of the board is up to speed with the new relationship of Lennar with this project as opposed to Related.
Of course, and I didn't formally say Mitch Newman with Lennar. My title is Director of Land Acquisition and Entitlement. Fancy way of saying governmental approvals, which is partly why I'm here. And Lennar is proud to tell you that we took title to the entire property from Related just a couple few weeks ago. So we did a lot of homework to lead up to that. Those kind of land closings are infinitely more complicated than you can imagine. But we got there with Related's assistance, completed the closing. So now, to put the puzzle together, Lennar's the owner of the property, and Lennar's charge is to secure the governmental approvals and proceed with the construction of the various sections and build the homes. The part, the homes that we will not build is the Commons. So the Commons primarily consists of apartment buildings with some mixed use, meaning some retail under and some retail buildings. So what our goal is there is Lennar will do all the land development work and then effectively transfer back those completed areas to Related, and they'll do it, they are experts in, and that's build those apartments and mixed-use buildings. So in a sense, it's a partnership, but for the moment, the partnership is on Lennar's side of the ledger. And we're going to be the face of Tuxedo Farms for the entirety of the community, except when we transfer the Commons buildings back over to Related. So they'll be in charge of getting the building permits for those buildings, and with their assistance, we'll come back to you at some point for a site plan approval with ABR. Did I say that right, ARB?
ARB.
ARB. Ah, it's three letters, I'm so close. I'm not going to say it again, for your review of the architecture. And hopefully, you'll love it, but we'll do that with Related's assistance down the road.
Are you going to own the land under the Commons? You own that also?
No, when we transfer that back, it'll be the buildings plus the property that relates to those buildings. So part of what we're eventually doing is subdividing those buildings into lots, because it's easier from a financing perspective to transfer them as lots as opposed to just a building. So you'll see that in the approval process as we proceed shortly enough. You'll see those subdivided lots, and that'll be forming the basis eventually for us to transfer that back to Related.
In fact, one of the drawings that's in your set is an updated amended subdivision plan further tweaking the lot lines within the Commons to facilitate that potential transfer, future transfer back from Lennar to Related. As we, as the transaction consummated, we drilled down further into the Commons, moving less of the lines, had to shift a little bit to accommodate setbacks and so forth. So again, in your package, it's a further amended subdivision plan just for the Commons.
Will Related be responsible for the balance of the construction, the buildings beyond that area?
No. No.
Who will do those?
That's it. That's Lennar. Anything else? Everything is Lennar, except for, easy way to say, everything is Lennar except the vertical construction of the Commons.
Okay.
That's how, roads and all the other stuff is us, the other sections, age-restricted section in the far-left-hand side of the map as I look at it, and everything else, the entrances, improvements related to the entrances, Route 17, traffic lights, all that stuff is on the Lennar ledger. So easy, easy way to think of it, it's all Lennar, except the Commons goes vertical. It's back to Related.
So Lennar will be constructing all of the homes on the periphery of that area?
Yeah, yes, every, all the homes you see on the periphery of this map, the Commons is essentially the darker buildings for the most part. But yes, that's exactly right. So the community has about 1,600 homes in it, and, I mean, approximating. And about 400 are the apartments, so about 1,200 of the homes on the periphery and way off the map is Lennar. So soon enough, we hope, you'll see a "Coming Soon" sign out front. We have to go through your New York registration process, of course, to get that going. You'll see a sign, "Coming Soon," and you'll see us rolling, and that'll happen next year. Yeah, it's exciting for us, too.
I have a question. Who's going to be in charge of the aesthetic of the stuff that Related is building that you're selling to them?
We are... Yeah.
The side work they're submitting for approval.
Well, so that will be a joint effort. We have the design standards and the architectural standards that your governing body approved during the smart code revisions. So they and we have to follow that. When we submit for site plan approval for those buildings, Lennar will be the applicant, will stay as the front person, so to speak. But Related will be supplying those buildings. We're going to look at them together, because we, as partners or co-developers, want it to be wonderful. And then you're, we want you to say the same thing. So there's going to be, I guess arguably, three levels over review. Related's looking at it, Lennar's looking at it, because we all need it to be fantastic. And then you're going to hopefully say, yeah, sounds good, or maybe tweak something.
So why don't we go into the next agenda item, the subdivision and site plan review? So if you could...
Just to, right, that's a good segue. As Mitch explained, right, Lennar's responsible not from vertical, the Commons, but the horizontal, to get the site prepped and ready. So that's what Christina's going to talk to you about, is that site work that Lennar would do to get the site ready for...
Hey, before you stop, is this easel setup okay? It feels like it's too high.
It's too high.
Sorry, well, just give us a minute for a technical adjustment. That's been bothering me ever since this was set up.
Thank you.
It's kind of cocked back.
Someone else is responsible for the vertical construction.
Right, right. Easels aren't our specialty. No, don't hold it any higher, that would... All right, thank you. And I appreciate everyone's attention, you were awesome.
So we went through, as they alluded to. We added right-of-ways for Brayburn and Wharton Place, which would help subdivide this later on. We made sure we went through, they complied with all the smart code requirements. We did make some adjustments to it to make sure that it fully complies with the road hierarchy requirements as well. They will be local roads, so the town roads are still Phil Road and Bardo Trail Road. Those are the ones that we would be dedicating to the town. The one thing, just to point out, we removed Building 1 and 4, because those are going to be in the, those are in the works. However, the parking is still going to be for Building 1. We're still showing the parking part as well. And this is just so that they can kind of hammer out the building, the final look of the two buildings, given the unique configuration, especially the building for a lot. The intention is still that it'll be a community, especially amenity building. And Building 1 would be, you know, an amenity building as well. We did go through and address the town consultant's comments. I know one of the comments were about showing the transect zones for clarity to make sure that we're complying, so we brought that in, in color, so all the colors of the transect zone, so it's very clear. We made sure that all the setbacks we showed were compliant. I mean, the issue becomes when we have multiple, multiuses, so we still had that color-coded. So it still shows the uses, given that it's commercial and residential in some of the lots. But we made sure that it was fully clear and compliant. We did go through and check the storm sizing of the drainage infrastructure. There will be some improvements required to some of the piping, just because we increased the amount of impervious area in Commons in general. However, we complied with all the requirements to convey the 25-year storm. The stormwater management practices, upper all size to treat the water quality storm per the stormwater analysis that was done previously. We made some amendments where needed to make sure that there was adequate area to provide treatment. Most of the basins don't have to be modified, they can stay, because we built in enough safety factors previously. And another thing in the plans, we broke out the landscape architecture plans. That was a comment. We now have a separate set of drawings, we show in large, we clearly show it. There's some items that will be detailed when we come back out for ARB approval, about like the foundation plantings, we're not showing those yet, but we will be showing them as part of that approval process to demonstrate that we comply with the code requirements. The intent is that we will comply with all the screening requirements of, especially like parking, seeing down between the buildings, you don't want to see the parking. So we'll make sure all the screening is appropriately there.
And I believe that you're targeting the ARB review at our next meeting. Is that correct?
Not for the Commons, right? Because that would be in conjunction with the vertical construction sometime next spring. At the next, or maybe the ARB would be for West Terrace. So if we plan to submit for West Terrace, site plan and ARB at the same time, and because that's a development that Lennar would be building, that would be for the vertical, hence the ARB. The Commons right now is strictly just the horizontal site work. Because there's no vertical, it's just site plan approval, not ARB.
Take on Christina tonight?
Sure.
So that's a great question, and kind of goes to the bigger picture I probably should have touched on. So tonight, the idea is to seek your approval for the Commons and Quail Road so we can get rolling with the important construction of an entry road and starting to get the Commons cleared. But the next step in this process, which is going to happen pretty quickly in October, we're going to submit the first residential for-sale section for your review and approval, and that will include the architectural review. I'm not saying ABR anymore, because I'm going to say it wrong. So that'll be your architectural review. So we have our architect already preparing the renderings and all that stuff. That'll be the single-family homes and the two types of townhomes. And we do plan to meet with Valerie later this week to make sure that that submission is to your satisfaction. We don't want to just show you the front elevation, and then Valerie's going to look at us and say, what happened to the side and the rear? Why isn't that also rendered? So we're going to try to make it a presentation like you've perhaps seen or approved in the past. And that'll be West Terrace. And then, as we get into the new year, we're going to start pushing Langen, and we're going to go to Upper...
Upland Park.
Upland Park.
North Bridge.
Yeah, so those will be the next sections. And then we're just going to keep rolling section by section and keep you and us as busy as we can.
Yeah, we'll be seeing them every month, we hope.
But in terms of scheduling and what's really in front of the board right now, the part that they're talking about, I think there was a little bit of a misstep. I almost had a panic attack. He said he's looking for approval tonight? He doesn't mean approval. And if he does, that's to happen tonight.
Did I, is that me?
Sorry. But it's important, because this is amending the subdivision, so that requires another public hearing. So I know that we had sort of had a general timeframe of when things were going to happen, but by amending this, it does require another public hearing. So what I would suggest is if the board does want to take some action, you can set the public hearing for your next meeting in November, and then we can go from there. I don't think it's quite ready for authorizing the drafting of a resolution, so I wouldn't have that or expect that in November. I would say maybe in December, that would be more appropriate. But for tonight, I know there's been, again, a lot of information, and there's so much, and they're going to be at every meeting, but for specific things. So I'm just trying to narrow what they're looking at. Give you the broad, have them give you the broad scope, and then narrow it down to, but where are we tonight, and what's the next step, so...
And our hope would be that between tonight and the November public hearing, whatever date is selected, because I think your regular meeting falls on election day, so we'll figure out what date that would be.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, so that between now and then, we would continue coordinating consultants, being responsive to comments. I'm sure they have, will have comments on the set that was submitted a couple weeks ago, or two weeks ago, whatever it was. So we'll get those plans farther advanced in the law, and hopefully, by the time November rolls around, staff will be comfortable that the drawings have advanced to a point where you would then be in a position to grant that approval.
So if you have nothing else to present, why don't we go to our consultants' comments? Valerie, I know you submitted...
Yeah, so we submitted some comments based off of the last round of comments we submitted in June. And I just want to highlight just a couple things. There's a number of comments that I think the applicant will be able to take care of in terms of making amendments to the plans. But one thing is landscaping. So this is something that our memo had, and I just want to kind of highlight. So there's, the landscaping plan now has, now are, is separated. And I wanted to see if the board wants a more in-depth landscaping review that you do on some of your other prior projects. And this would just be looking at the types of plantings that are proposed to make sure that they, there's no concerns that... that they, there's no concerns that of the planting types, and so many of them, there's gonna be a lot of new plantings on the site. So that's something for the board to consider, if you want a more in-depth review, and we can do that. The other thing I just wanted to highlight, and this is, so this application does require a wetlands permit. And in their response memo, they noted that they are going to be requesting the wetlands permit to be approved concurrently with the site plan approval. So I, right now, the agenda just has site plan approval, so I think it's something that we need to probably consider for if, yeah, and if that needs the...
Public hearing included in the wetland permit by the June.
We had the public hearing underway.
So is that, we never did official... We didn't do any action on it.
So that, right, so also...
It would be included in any future action that the board takes. Right, so we just have to keep that in mind.
But we don't, we don't have to address that at the next public hearing before the...
No, that was already...
But within the resolution that includes...
Yeah, that way it doesn't get dropped. Yeah. And then, a couple other things. Also with the, because of the new special permit revisions, you're looking for some waivers from the planning board in terms of like parking. So we probably wanna basically enumerate those at some point, so that the planning board understands what they're potentially giving waivers to, in terms of like the on-street or specifically dealing with some of the sidewalk designs. And we also noted that on Quail Road, that there seem to be other sidewalks that are supposed to be required by the smart code, but there doesn't appear to be sidewalks. So I think it'd be good at the next meeting, just to confirm which, which streets you're asking the sidewalk waivers for in terms of the street design.
Got it.
For the planning board. And then, we just continue to raise the issue of like commercial loading and service areas. I think that's something that the planning board should look at, just to make sure that they're gonna have adequate areas, especially in terms of the commercial for the commons, but also for like residential. Because it, right now, the memo notes that it can be, they'll be using like current RNA temporary parking, like they can temporarily park in the parking spaces that are provided, but we just wanna make sure that there's gonna be, it's not gonna be a problem, since so many places get deliveries now continuously. And then, other than that, that was really our main concerns. And a number of the other comments deal with ARB, which will be dealt with later on.
Okay, thanks Valerie. Sean, wanna go over yours, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you may know, I was unable to submit written comments this evening. I'd been under the weather last week. That's why I'm appearing virtually at night. I did have a chance to review the plans. Because I was stuck in my house, I just wanted to thank Langen again. They sent me a set of plans directly to my house, so that helped me move forward with my review. A couple of things I just wanna point out, and one is really the question for Brad and Kelly. They, as the applicant indicated before, when Lennar did their introduction at the September meeting, they are proposing an amended subdivision. We've already conditionally approved the subdivision. Lennar is subdividing it a little bit further, as you've heard this evening, to transfer back to Related some of the parcels. However, now the subdivision includes more than five parcels of five acres. So I think now we're back into a situation where realty subdivision review by the Department of Health is going to be required. And I don't know if that has any effect on the potential subdivision approval or the amended subdivision approval. And specifically, what I mean by that is, when you approved it last, you approved preliminary and final subdivision approval. I think now, if realty subdivision is in play, then it would be preliminary and then final as a separate action. It's not something we need a decision on this evening. The consultants are gonna have to work that out procedurally.
Sean, do you think they'd have any changes to, if it's a bare subdivision? Because they wouldn't be approving the site plan. Do you think they'd have any changes to that?
They, they would make an approval of the water system. The applicant's proposing a public water system, so that goes to the Department of Health as well. So they, they may, you know, Kelly, you asked if it was site plan, they may have comments on the site plan.
Okay, thanks Sean.
In, in terms of the site plan, I, I think it was mentioned this evening, I just wanna make sure, because I didn't specifically hear it. The plans before you right now, Buildings One and Buildings Four have been removed with a note to indicate that they will be back for site plan approval later. Building One, as you recall, was the recreational building. I know, or I believe that that was done because Lennar wants to have a lot more input into that building. Building Four was the civic space. I don't know why that was removed at this time, but I know that was an important element of the town board when they issued this special permit. So perhaps the applicant can provide some additional information on the removal of that building from the application right now.
Yeah, sure Sean. And you just, you just said the answer, actually. Both Buildings One and Four are recreation amenity-style buildings, and we were looking at them on the plans, and so we don't know that they're gonna actually conform to those exact squares. We have to make the right decision on the building size and the exact configuration. So we said to, to Langen, you know what, let's take those squares off. I can't be certain that's the exact shape. And I didn't wanna put the board in a position where you take a vote at, at some point, a vote of approval at some point.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't want Kelly looking at me anymore. Where you take a vote at some point, hopefully for approval. And then we come back, and, and your building department perhaps is, or somebody's saying, wait a minute, that square had a, you know, and now you're showing us something a little different, what happened? So we said, we're not ready to make that call, so let's not put you in a spot where we're gonna set the wrong expectations. That, and that applies to both buildings, Sean. We know the uses that are necessary. We'll get there, but when we're, we're ready to roll out the right building for everybody.
The, the last thing I just really wanna over tonight with the board, and it's really more for you to discuss and consider yourselves. You've heard the applicant's schedule. They are going to be ramping up and going to be addressing other neighborhoods. And we've been looking at the comments for some time. There's been a lot of progress with respect to the plans. But I think the applicant is getting to the point where they're going to be looking for conditional approval very soon from you, within the November, December timeframe. I think it's relatively easy for the consultants, Valerie and I, and Kelly to a lesser extent, to work with the applicant outside of meetings and electronically to provide comments and clarity on our comments that we've already provided. But in terms of the board's comments, I just want you to be aware, I don't know if there's any way that, you know, you, you wanna channel any, you know, comments that you might have as you start to digest this and, you know, complete your review going through this. But I just, I don't wanna get to a point where you may have additional comments, but then you have a resolution in front of you and you feel short-changed in your review.
Okay, thank you Sean. So any questions from board members? Bill?
Not for me. More to come.
Yeah, so, I think this is a point I make a couple times, but I wonder how you proceed without an architect? And how do you, like with the buildings that you took off the plan, how do you know that these plans are, are the right shapes for the buildings without an architect onboard?
So my understanding is that with the, with Related approaching for the phase ARB, that some of these buildings, the mixed use and the commercial, those are pretty far along. We are constrained by setbacks, so we have to be locked in essentially into these footprints at this point. There's no moving around, so Related, when they're doing their buildings and in conjunction with Lennar, they understand. So there's not much, and plus, we're also constrained by what the smart code and performance standards all require as well. So we have to comply with these configurations. They're, they do understand any undulations, because that's part of the performance requirements that need to occur, so that isn't just a rectangle. That all needs to occur within the actual building footprint that we're showing right now. So they, they fully understand.
So this, this like layout and these building footprints are part of the smart code already?
No, the, for the, for, with the, on the architectural requirements, they talk about undulations and articulation in the buildings. So they understand that all that has to happen within the, the building footprint that we're showing right now.
If we grant site plan approval for this layout, right? But how do we understand...
Well, no, that's where they are, so that we're coming back for phase ARB. So the site plan approval is mainly to do the ground improvement, and then what they're gonna do with, with Lennar, Related is gonna come back, and they're gonna get phased if there will be approval for certain buildings. If I remember correctly, it was Building 14, 15, Three, or Five and Six, that were pretty far along. Probably Seven and Eight, that quarter there, they were pretty far along, so those are developed. But when they come back for the other buildings that they're looking at developing, they understand that it has to be within those footprints, because we are locked now by setbacks. So therefore, that's, it's a separate approval.
And what are the footnotes then? The, Related was here actually a couple of months ago. The architect, I think, sat right back here from ILA, so Related does have an architect that they worked in conjunction with to come up with these footprints.
Exactly.
Sure. I, I guess from, from my point of view, I'd like to see more about the buildings. It's hard for me to tell, where's the retail? Where are the units? How do the buildings work? Where are the doors? How do they feed into the site?
So there were concept elevations provided as part of the last package that were developed by ILA.
Yeah.
That represent what Related is...
They're, they're conceptual in nature, though. I mean, they're not site planned.
Yeah, and we're not seeking approval for those now. Again, not, not the construction itself, just the horizontal footprint. So when we come back with Related sometime this spring, we'll have exactly those materials that we're asking for.
So really, what, what the site plan is, is you're approving the location. You're not approving what they look like or anything like that. So you're not gonna get that level of detail. It's similar to Augusta Properties, the diner, the diner, right? That the board approved, where you approved the layout on the property, the location of things, the circulation, the setbacks, the parking spaces, all just, you know, boxes. And then they went on their merry way. And they came back to you at a later date with the colors and everything, and a depiction of this is what it's gonna look like. So this is really the first step they're gonna come back with, this is what it's gonna look like, here's where the doors are, this is where, you know, it's gonna be just the prettiest stuff.
And so based on this approval, we could not pull a building permit to start going up?
No, I, I, I under, I understand what you're asking for. I'm saying, you know, design-wise, it seems disjointed to me.
Well, I mean, it's, it really is their, their risk, I would say. So if they, if they find that they need something shifted, or they're back before you, and they're either stuck with it, or they're back before you for a moment.
Okay, so then my, my next question was talking about the subdivisions. So we've got a couple large lots now before us. Kind of with four or five buildings apiece, maybe? Is that how I'm reading the plans, right? And you said you wanna, you're gonna come back later and subdivide further to each building? Or did I misunderstand?
That's part of this. So what we did was, in here, this was all one lot at one point.
Okay, so now the three sublots there.
So we subdivided into the three lots here. That's what we did to help facilitate the sale back to Related, to develop.
Okay, and then within those lots, Lennar's developing the, the parking and the site work within there.
Yeah, we're, they're doing all the infrastructure, the grading, the layout, and everything, the utilities.
In the public ways and within those lots.
Yeah. Basically, they're getting it pad-ready essentially for Related to come back in and build the construction.
Okay, thanks.
One other thing I wanna bring up is, I just became aware of this today, that there's an invasive plant on the site somewhere. We don't know where it is. It's called Japanese knotweed. And I think you, you've seen this.
Yeah, Kelly and Sean were fun enough to...
And, and I think you already have a bit of a plan for it.
We do. Mitch, you want to take...
Yeah. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. It's, it's to the town's benefit and our benefit that we get ahead of it. So we're, we're doing some, I'll call it, advanced lawn cutting out there over the next couple of weeks, just because we wanna make sure, where exactly is the road? There's been a lot of overgrowth, no one to blame, but that's just nature. So our contractor will get out there and take care of this over the next couple of weeks. If there is a map that can fine-tune where it is, please send that to us, because I, I just don't wanna say, hey, look it up on the internet and find this thing and go after it. It's just not gonna be effective. But anything you can get us would be appreciated. Okay, and then we'll tackle it.
I have a question. If we don't know where it is, how do we know it exists?
That's a good question. That, I'll...
Sounds like quantum physics.
I know.
I believe somebody reached out to the chairman and said that they were aware that it exists. So I think maybe if the chairman can reach out to whomever this person is and say...
Just a general area of what it...
It's impeded right now, so it's really easy to spot if you...
Well, it sounds like you gotta volunteer.
Yeah, I was just gonna maybe tell you a joke, yeah.
Common invasive species, you see it all along highways right now, and it is very aggressive, but it is the time of year for any...
It's like the Heisenberg uncertainty principle.
Now, I'm certainly not an expert on this. It sounds like a... But I've been told that if you just cut it, it doesn't kill it. So you said you're gonna send somebody in there to do something?
Yeah, well, I don't know the mechanics of what they're gonna do. If it was up to me, I would think you'd go to Home Depot and buy a jug of...
Yeah, Roundup allegedly kills it.
Yeah. So we're, we're gonna leave it to the expert.
Ashley, I think she has some input.
We'll, we'll develop an invasive species management plan that we, that the contractors can work with to...
And we're gonna need that quickly, because they're getting out there. We don't need it tomorrow. Alright, thank you. So it sounds like we'll be able to work with somebody that knows them. Midday Thursday. Alright, you're, you're tough, okay.
I would think that the area that you're going to disturb, that will be the area that you will concentrate on if, if this plant is there.
Oh, absolutely, but...
I mean, later on, as you progress, you might have to look at other areas, right?
Absolutely, but, but what we're gonna tell the contractor to do is, as best we can, based with Ashley's assistance, is if we can catch it now anywhere, let, let's go get it. Because it sounds like it'll come back double if we do nothing.
So are you suggesting that you're gonna review the entire site now?
No.
And that would be best, but...
It would, no, I'm suggesting that you're going to see what you can get us in terms of a map, if it's available. If not, we'll work simply with Ashley, giving us some kind of a plan that I, that says, this is what it looks like. If you see this, here's a way to get rid of it. And while they're out there doing the, what they wanna call brush hogging of, of the roadways and some of the utility areas, they'll keep an eye out for it, and we'll tackle it. Unless, if you identify it, we'll go to those areas. If not, we'll just keep an eye out for it and identify it along the way.
Even if the individual who brought this to our attention, even if he's identified it, I don't think we can take his word as gospel that this is where it is.
We'll, we'll take it as a starting point. Yeah, we won't take it to think that's the only spot.
A carrot, but yes, we can put a plan together.
Some third-party expert.
Yes.
Okay. And this doesn't really apply to this, but it's a question that Bill and I ask at most of the meetings. Are you going to have a substation? Anywhere, ever?
What is a substation?
Electrical substation.
Electrical.
Oh, I don't think so, and that...
There's no substation.
As far as we understand it, based on our communication with Orange and Rock Langley, a substation was required.
Okay. Kinda surprised at that, but...
I mean, you've gotta bring a lot of energy into that site for everything you're doing. And I would think it's not coming in at 120 to 08 volts. I would think it'd be a much higher voltage, step down, and then there's a distribution system feeding all of the buildings. So to say there's no substation, I really would double-check that highly.
Because I, I'm not aware of one close by you.
No, no, I mean, I mean, my house is a pole-mounted distribution transformer. For my house and the few houses in my neighborhood, that's, comes in at about 13,000 volts, and it's stepped down, which is something of this size. I can't imagine you don't need some pretty sophisticated step-down in distribution. I'm an engineer by background at this point. It sickles my interest.
So, and then we've heard this comment before, and we've come back and said, just no, let us give you some more, let, let's, we'll get that tickle, right? So we'll get you some more info and explain why the answer is no.
Okay.
And do you have a will-serv letter or something like that from Lennar?
Right, you have some documentation from Lennar.
I was gonna say, you don't need it.
Yeah, that would be even better.
That's fine, that's the end of the story.
Got it.
Okay, so, I think the only thing we can do on this is schedule a public hearing for, for our November meeting.
Right, so you have to reschedule your November meeting, and then you can schedule a public hearing for that night.
Well, we're not sure we're going to reschedule it.
Okay, in that case, you're going to, just schedule it for that night.
Well, maybe we ought to talk about the November meeting then first.
Okay.
Right? As was said before, it's on Election Day, and there are voting machines in this room, but there's a room downstairs, a smaller room, called the courtroom, where meetings have been held, I remember in the past.
Ozzie, they've been held.
It's, it's smaller, but we think it's doable, and at least from my perspective, all the consultants apparently can make the Election Day meeting. You can also, Sean?
He's looking at us counting, but not in back.
Does anybody on the board have a problem with having the meeting on Election Day?
What's the date?
November 7th, first Tuesday.
Possibly, yeah, that'll be in, I'll check.
You might be there the next day also, if we reschedule. Okay. All right, so it seems like we can hold our meeting on a regular date. You guys okay with that?
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
We have no problem.
It's wonderful for us to come to this.
I don't think it's going to be a big conversation.
We're good.
You guys are good? Okay. All right, so let's hold it as currently scheduled, so now I can make a motion to hold a public hearing, our next meeting on November 7th.
Yep, I second.
All favorites? Okay. So, I think that, do you want to take this care of you for tonight?
Yep, thank you very much.
See you next month. And then we'll vote early.
Thanks, everybody.
If you haven't voted, the election won't be just for theirs. Have a good night. I wanted to congratulate you, I was at the partnerships meeting this morning, so, well deserved. I appreciate that, thank you for coming.
Okay, the next, the next item is bond review approval from HOR Services. This is a reminder, HOR is a seventh house subdivision, excuse me, there's a seven lot subdivision on Warwick Road, which we approved subdivision-wise, but not site plan-wise, back last year. We approved the overall subdivision, we didn't approve any of the individual sites.
Individual site plan, that's correct.
So this is a performance bond for the, the infrastructure, the roads, the drainage, and so on. Sean, you want to go over the letter that you submitted on this and the estimate?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, under your code, as a requirement to file the subdivision map, the applicant has two options. One, they can build all of the public infrastructure, and public infrastructure is defined in your code, it includes the road, the curb, and the drainage, and other similar type components, or they can bond it. And the purpose of the performance bond is to serve as security to the town to make sure that those public improvements are constructed and constructed in accordance with the plan. So, the applicant indicated that they don't want to start construction, they want to file the subdivision map, they want to create the lots, they understand they still need site plan approval for the lots, but this would allow them to file the subdivision map and comply with your code. So, under your code, you, the planning board, have the authority to set the amount of the performance bond, based on a recommendation from myself, and you also have the ability to set the term or the length of the bond, which would be the time the developer has to construct the improvements. I requested the developer's engineer provide me with an initial estimate, I considered that, then I did my own individual estimate, and we were very close. I was slightly less, I think by $50,000 on a $2 million bond, and I've made a recommendation for you for a performance bond in an amount of $2,073,900. I've also made a recommendation that you set the maximum performance time of three years, because the developer has repeatedly indicated to you in the past that he doesn't intend to build these houses on spec, he's going to build them singularly, one at a time, and he's going to take his time, so I, there's no real harm for you setting that time out to three years, if you feel more comfortable setting something shorter, you could do that, but then the developer would have to come back for you for extensions.
Can the three years be extended also?
Yes, it may. Yes, it may.
In, in one-year increments, I assume?
I, I don't recall if the code has specific increment, but I don't think it would be less than one year, so that would probably be the minimum amount.
So the developer is aware of this value on this bond?
Yes.
And apparently he's, and apparently he's aware.
Well, the estimate that his engineer submitted to me approximately a month ago, like I said, was slightly higher, and I did share this with the developer's engineer and the developer last week, and I haven't received any, any comments on it.
Okay. Anything else, Sean?
That's all.
So is this a motion to-
It's a motion to accept the bond recommendation of $2,073,900 for a term of three years.
So I'll make a motion to that effect, do I have to repeat that?
No.
Okay. Second, all favor?
And just so the board knows, the applicant is working on completing their conditions. One of the last thing they have to, last things that they have to do are complete the legal documents, which we'd actually been working on since like October, but finally heard back from their attorney a couple of weeks ago, and they're, they're ready to move, so they can't move until, they can't file the plan until they finish this, so we're ready to go.
Okay. Okay, just a couple of quick other things, I mentioned this the last couple of meetings, training, I know you're whittling away at it, I think Susan is-
Done.
I'm partially done. So if anybody needs training yet, there's quite a few courses that are available online, some live ones that are coming, so again, let's try to get that taken care of.
I'm scheduled to lose.
Good. And I just want to give everybody an update on, on Watchtower's Ramapo entrance. I don't know if you've driven past there recently, but they've, they've made progress, and it appears that heavy trucks can go in the Ramapo entrance now, they've put gravel and stone, and for the last couple of days, there have been two large trucks with the cut trees on those trucks, and they look like they're ready to come out, they must have gone in that way. And probably 100, 200 feet off of Sterling Mine Road, they've put a little guardhouse. So that must be for monitoring the trucks that come in, come out, so our insistence that they move that along is maybe having some kind of an effect, positive effect. So, I was glad to see the, the work out, I'm sure you've seen it, Susan. Yeah, they were concerned with the trees, if I recall, right? Well, they, they cut the trees- Cutting them off load. Yeah, there's still a lot of logs piled up, ready to be either processed, rounded up into mulch or taken out, and you can see those on that road too. So, looks like they're, they're making progress. So that's the only other thing I wanted to bring up, next meeting is 11:07, which is good, so I'll make a motion to adjourn if anybody does have anything else to bring up.
Second.
All favorite?
Bye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks Sean. Bye, Sean.
Sean, feel better.